And welcome to the regular meeting of your Board of Commissioners, April 19th. We run a little late tonight due to a prior workshop, but thank you everyone for being here, virtually and in person. So with that, we are in order, and tonight, the first item will be invocation by Chris Burns, Reverend at Draper Pentecostal Holiness Church. Following that, we'll have Houston Barrow give us the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'll ask everyone if you're able to stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, we come to you today, Lord, and we thank you for this day that you have given to us. Lord, today, we are conducting your business of this county, Lord, and we ask for your blessings upon it, Lord. Lord, I ask for wisdom to be granted to each commissioner, Lord, and each person that is working, Lord. Lord, we all need wisdom, Lord, and your word says that if we lack it, then we could ask of you, and you would give it to us liberally. And so, Lord, we ask for that tonight. Lord, I also ask for peace in our county, Lord, in each city that is in our county, Lord. Let your peace that passes all understanding dwell in every home, Father, and every business, Lord, in every situation. And, Lord, we thank you, we honor you, and we give you the praise, and we pray these things in your son's holy and wonderful and mighty name, Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, gentlemen. As you know, we all work from a prepared agenda, and that has been published. Are there any updates to that agenda, Commissioner Pertle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I would like to request we approve the agenda and add to it, under the Consent Item Number Six, E., reappointment of Ernest Lawson to the Rockingham County Planning Committee for Services to the Elderly.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a second?
My second.
Thank you, Commissioner Travis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Well, we have an approved agenda. Well, gentlemen, the next item on our agenda is resolution honoring Ron Ferris, and we'll have Ronnie Tate present that. Come on, Mr. Tate, if you will.
We going down there?
Yep.
All right, you ready? So this is happy occasion for us, saying to you, Ron retired, he brings so much institutional knowledge and hard work and just a wonderful work ethic to Rockingham County, and he departed from us here a week or so ago, and we miss him already, and, but the board has a resolution to honor you tonight, Ron, and if you allow me, I'd like to read it for you. That's okay? Resolution honoring the dedicated service of Ron Ferris to Rockingham County. Whereas, Ron Ferris began working for Rockingham County on April 17, 1980, as a maintenance worker for the Engineering and Public Utilities Department. Whereas, Ron Ferris served as a lead maintenance worker until August of 1984, at which time he was promoted to the position of Building and Grounds Maintenance Supervisor for Rockingham County. And whereas during his many years of working in engineering and public utilities, Ron Ferris has successfully overseen the construction of over 85% of all county-owned buildings, the most predominant being the Rockingham County Judicial Center, 911 Operations, Madison May Dam Public Library, and the Western EMS space. And whereas Ron Ferris, no, excuse me, whereas Ron Ferris is seen by his fellow county employees as served as an example of public service, worked in many overtime hours, working and serving equally alongside his staff, and devoting his career to the betterment of Rockingham County. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners that Ron Ferris be honored for his more than 40 years of loyal and impeccable service to Rockingham County and its citizens this day, 19th of April, 2021.
Ron, we have this frame, and this is one that you'll have to hang in your own house, where we usually ask you to hang and adjust everything around here. We usually also ask you to go over and help the Board of Elections out. I know the Mark calls you on occasion, so everybody thinks you're a personal handyman to the county, so, and I can tell you've done some wonderful work, you've saved the citizens a lot of money, you have set an example, a standard that we would all care to emulate, and I congratulate you, and I hope retirement is a great one. And before I hand this to you, I want to start to applaud for the great work of Ron. I want you to get up here in the midst of this shady-looking bunch here, if you would.
If the board would be okay, I'd like to get the maintenance staff, they came out tonight, and I'd like to get them up here, hopefully for a picture and recognize them. We've got two missing tonight, they're both under the weather, so we have two more that
Okay, say hammer.
Nails.
Okay, everybody ready? All right, here we go.
Well, I think it says a lot when you have that many people come out to honor you, so congratulations, Ron. Many happy years. All righty, folks, our next item is our consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are non-controversial items, however, if anyone has any questions about the items, please contact Lance Metzler, the county manager. Mr. Metzler will be glad to fill you in on these details. Do we have a motion to approve our consent agenda as modified?
A moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Next item goes all the way down to public comment. And, Mr. Metzler, we do have two people lined up to speak tonight. Mr. Metzler, if you will go over the guidelines for the public comment period, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. The public comment period shall be for the purpose of allowing members of the public to present any matter pertaining to county business or items on the Board of Commissioners' agenda. Remarks should be addressed directly to the Board of Commissioners and not to staff, the audience, or media. The chairperson will open the public comment period. Any person who wishes to speak shall approach the podium and not speak from his or her seat. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and physical address when he or she approaches the podium. Citizens shall be allotted three minutes. Citizens will be allowed to yield their time on a specific topic by utilizing one more attendee's time. This would allow no more than six minutes. I will time the speaker and notify the chairman of their limit. The time clock will start with three minutes unless yielded, timed to six minutes. You will hear a beep at one minute to alert you to wrap up your comments. If you already yield time or time is yielded to you, then please let the chairman know in advance. Speakers will not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, or use language of a personal nature which insults or demeans any person or which, when directed at a public official, is not related to his or her official duties. The Board of Commissioners may accept written comments in lieu of oral statements. Written statements can be delivered to the county manager's office. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. The first item tonight, or the first person, rather, who signed up is Corey Scott. Please come list your name and address.
Good evening. My name's Corey Scott. I live at 240 Clark Lake Road in Reedsville, and I wanted to talk just a few minutes about the food drive, the countywide food drive. This is our 11th year. I stood before this group two years ago, when we said we needed to collect 50,000 I food items. We ended up with 53,000. Last year, we got started, didn't do so well, but we still ended up getting about 38,000 food items, or pounds or dollars worth of food items that we were able to provide the local agencies that we support, such as the community, Christian Community Ministries, Quapry Christian Ministries, the Reedsville Food Pantry, both of the Salvation Armies in Eden and Reedsville, Men and Women in Christ, the Veterans Coalition, and Hands of God. This year, we set a goal for 50,000 pounds, and we've already collected several thousand dollars worth of cash donations. We've collected several thousand pounds of food already. And then on Friday, I'm the bishop of the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints Congregation, and our church donated 40,000 pounds to the county food drive. So we will certainly pass our 50,000-pound goal this year. So I just wanted to give you an update, express appreciation for Mabel and her support in telling me all of the places in the county where food is overflowing, like in the libraries, and also in the county offices, and express appreciation from the county commissioners and the support of the county government for helping this food drive be successful. And so I just wanted to just update you so that you knew what was going on and how we are helping, significantly helping those in need in our county.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. We appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you for all you do. Next person on our list is Janice Wilkinson. Please give your name and address.
My name is Janice Wilkinson. I'm from Baggage Road, 891 Baggage Road in Madison. I'm also the chairperson of the Rockingham County Planning Committee for the Elderly. Good evening, county commissioners. In July of 2020, a group of concerned Rockingham County residents and agencies began meeting to discuss ways to incorporate AARP's Livable Community Initiative into Rockingham County. From these meetings, Livable Rockingham was formed. Our mission is through the partnership of community members, public and private organizations, we will advocate for and develop a long-range plan for a livable Rockingham County. We will convene, develop strategies, and implement change that is based on best practices, inclusion, and the needs and values of the community with the AARP Livable and Age-Friendly Communities, which aid domains of livability. In the fall of 2020, Livable Rockingham began to work in conjunction with the Rockingham County Planning Committee for the Elderly on the development of their 2020-2024 Rockingham County Aging Plan. On May 20th, Livable Rockingham will take the next step in the advancement of our mission by hosting a virtual kickoff of this initiative, followed by community listening sessions throughout the spring and summer. Tonight, we would like to extend a verbal invitation to all of you to join us on May 20th at 9:30. Formal invites will be sent out this week from Ashley Cooper with the Aging, Disability, and Transit Services. We hope that you will join us, as we have national and local speakers who will share the impact of a livable community. These types of communities are not only good for the people, but for the businesses as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilkinson. We appreciate all you do for Rockingham County. Thank you. That concludes our public comment period tonight. Next item on our agenda is Rule Ready Site Project, Glenn Fleming. Good evening.
Commissioner Chairman, thank you for your time. Glenn Fleming with us, Ravenel, here tonight on behalf of the City of Reedsville, to give you a quick update on the ongoing development of the horse park parcel within the city, talk a little bit about the city's pending request for some additional funding where that development is concerned, and also seek action on a request for cost sharing and the required local match that supports their pending application requirement. Just quickly, this is a 55-acre parcel. It's part of a larger, roughly 100-plus acre tract. It's located just north of the Loves Travel Plaza. It's got good access and in close proximity to a number of city and county amenities, good frontage and access to North Carolina 29. DOT right now tells us there's about 29,000 vehicles a day that pass that site, so it gets good exposure. We only expect that number to increase. The city and the county identified this area previously as very well-suited to make use of the state's Rule Ready program, which is designed to fund utility construction, to bring rural parcels up to a site readiness criteria, make them attractive for future development, economic development. So the city submitted an application and was approved for roughly $1.5 million grant to fund the construction of paving, water, and wastewater infrastructure to serve this site. There was a required 25% local match, and at the time, the city and the county participated equally in meeting that local match. So we completed engineering design of that project late summer last year. The city received bids on the project, construction bids on the project, in early fall. The low bidder on the project was triangle grading and paving out of Burlington. The construction bids at that time, and sort of a precursor, I would say, to what we're seeing across the industry and across the region right now, came in high across the board. The low bid was roughly $2.7 million, which was well in excess of the roughly $1.3 available for construction. So acting on behalf of the city, we entered into a value engineering discussion with contractor. Earlier this year, we reached consensus on a reduced scope, that value engineered some items out of the project, but got it down to an amount that fits within the existing funding award, and still, we believe, meets the intent of the original grant, which is to deliver graded paving access and public utility service to the tract. So Contractor's Notice to Proceed was dated 15 March. They're currently on-site and underway with some early clearing and grubbing activities. So while those value engineering discussions were playing out, we were also having a parallel dialogue with the state, just to keep them abreast of the situation and to keep tabs on whether or not there might be some additional funding available for the site. So we got word that there was. In late February, we cleared the required pre-application process, and there's now a full application into the state to request some additional funding, approximately $720,000, with the intent of restoring some of the value-engineered items back into that project, namely, a permanent emergency standby generator to serve a proposed wastewater pump station, and to extend diesel drive across the southernmost creek. Both of these were deemed to be items that were integral to facilitating the future development of the project. So here tonight to seek action on the city's request for similar cost share of the local match required of this, as I said, the funding application that's in right now is for approximately $720,000. The required local match would total roughly $180,000, and my understanding is the city is seeking a similar 50-50 cost sharing to what was previously agreed upon. Happy to entertain you. Any questions?
Commissioner Travis?
Thank you. I appreciate it, Mr. Fleming, for coming out, but a couple of questions. Let me make sure I got you right. Originally, it was a $1.5 million project. We cost shared with City of Reedsville 25%. We paid that. The contract came in overbid, and then you all seeked another grant to cover the additional cost, right?
Yes, sir.
And now you're wanting us to pay 25% more on what the original was?
Not exactly. So it did come in overbid. We worked with the contractor to value engineer that amount down. We cut it roughly in half.
Okay.
Okay. Found that there's a couple of items deemed integral to the project that would really be best if they could be value-engineered or restored back to the original construction contract.
Right.
That's the generator and the paving. That's what the initial request is for. It's $720,000, and yes, sir, they request a similar cost sharing on that.
So how much of all together is counties putting into this project?
Your previous match was roughly $180,000, I believe.
Yeah.
And the amount asked of you this evening is approximately $90,000. All told, for roughly $2.2 million of infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions?
$70,000.
Go ahead, I'll go last.
Commissioner Berger?
The, I guess this is really for Lance. Has the county been in the loop in all these discussions the entire time, been informed of what's going on?
We have. Actually, Press and I met with Mark Poole with the State Department of Commerce. We tried to see if we could get the waiver for the 25% match, but they weren't willing to do it because part of that waiver, part of that match or the amount was the $155,000 mitigation fee from the Corps of Engineers, and that's 100% local. So I would recommend you all consider this.
And the, I guess the generator was in that initial RFP or the initial proposal?
I'm not sure.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. So it's, I guess, common for us to share in those expenses for equipment?
Well, typically, in the past, the county's always gone 50-50 when it came to the development of any of the sites, both in Eden and in Reedsville.
Yes, but this seems to be equipment as opposed to the site. That's why I'm asking that question.
That, I don't know.
The generator is integral equipment to the wastewater pump station, so it's a permanent on-site wastewater pump station. It's a typical requirement and benefit to have a permanent emergency standby generator to guarantee uninterrupted sanitary sewer service, especially to industrial or commercial development in the event of an extended power outage.
Yeah, I got you. Commissioner Pertle?
Here we go. I guess my question was that this is consistent with the way we have worked with municipalities in the past, as far as cost sharing, even on infrastructure, that eventually is a revenue producer for the municipality, but not the county?
We have in the past.
Okay.
How was it missed by so much? Who was responsible for putting it out initially?
So I think there's probably a couple of factors at play. Just generally speaking, we've seen a significant increase in materials pricing over the course of the last year, and that's attributable to a number of factors. The pandemic and some supply chain interruptions associated with it, and some of the earlier winter weather we had.
But not this large of a percentage generally?
So that plays into a very good portion of it, actually.
Right, a portion of it.
Yes, sir. Beyond that, and what the county manager referenced, is Army Corps of Engineers mitigation fees. So the city was aware of, as were we. There's two existing creeks or streams located on-site. We proceeded with engineering design, and once we surpassed that rough 50% milestone where we have a good horizontal alignment, and we would typically approach Corps of Engineers for permitting of jurisdictional waters, we did so at that time. Became aware that they were in the midst of a change in philosophy of some sort, in the way that they looked at permitting of development like this. They no longer allowed partial permitting of cumulative impacts. They wanted all cumulative impacts permitted upfront. So we look at the site with both stream crossings and their totality. We can't permit just the southernmost crossing and defer the northern crossing to a future, to a future date. So we're being forced to permit all those crossings at one time as well.
So we won't have to do that in the future?
No, sir. No, sir. That's a one-time expenditure, and that will be met in its entirety upfront.
There's no statute of limitations or expiration date on it?
Not to my knowledge, no, sir.
So as regulations change, this will be covered or grandfathered, if you will?
Yes, sir. That's my understanding.
Commissioner Richardson?
I'm just a little anxious anytime we spend public money. And it just so happens this week, it seems like every time I turn around, I'm looking at some cost overrun or an increase in house prices or construction materials. PVC's going up about 100% in the next 60 days. This money for the generator, is that a fixed bid, or are you going to be back here a week after next?
Yes, sir. Part of the discussions we had with the contractor was to honor their bid pricing.
More questions?
I got one question. Why is he here, anyway? My memory's gone, but this project, didn't we start this like two years ago?
Over two years ago.
Approximately, I want to say, 2018.
Yeah, 2018, and it's took this long just to get to this point?
Yes, sir.
Am I missing something? I mean, the Army Corps of Engineers held us up that long just so they could get?
No, sir. I wouldn't say there was any undue delay from them. That did take probably a 90- to 120-day period, which is fairly typical of that type of permitting. As I said, bids were received late summer, early fall of last year. The value engineering discussion took about 90 to 120 days. And again, just due to the unforeseen nature of how we were going to have to permit the stream crossings and modify some engineering design, admittedly, engineering design took a little bit longer than anticipated.
I got you. I just, for some reason, I thought this project was already done. I mean, two years ago, I thought it was already done, and we're still throwing money at it. It's sort of like the horse park ordeal all over again. Let's just keep throwing money to it until it finally gets built.
Like I said, I'd like to think there's an end in sight. Contractor is on-site and underway. Their current contract completion date is in September, I believe, mid-September.
This year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And if we're successful with this funding application, that will probably add, I would say, another 60 to 90 days to that construction contract, but barring unforeseen weather delays, they should be wrapped up well before the end of the year.
Right. Commissioners, you know, we've already invested with City of Reedsville already, a big chunk of money already. I mean, I kind of hate to not continue this project that we've started, so I'm in favor.
Is that a motion, Commissioner?
I make a motion to approve.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Appreciate you being here tonight.
That sucks, man. That's just like...
I got a question for Lance.
All right.
For Lance later on.
Oh, later, okay.
Our next item on the agenda is a workforce development update.
That's ridiculous.
Dr. Tony Gunn, looks like he'll be presenting tonight. Thank you for being here. We appreciate you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of Dr. Kenlaw and Rockingham Community College, I'm glad to be here tonight. Since October 2018, the college has received a little over $4.5 million in revenues from the quarter cent sales tax, and through the end of last month, we've expended $3.7 million. Monthly revenues have held steady, averaging $191,000 over the last six months and $188,000 over the last year. And fortunately, we've not seen any drop due to the pandemic. Of course, the major use for the quarter cent sales tax is the Center for Workforce Development. You remember, this is a 42,000, 19 million, 42,000 square foot, $19 million structure that will house our advanced manufacturing programs. And these programs include computer integrated machining, industrial systems, and electrical systems. Other programs will include customized training for industry and our small business center. And I'm pleased to report that the project is moving ahead and on schedule. We're wrapping up the third and final stage of design. The stage will produce the final plans for the building, and then once those plans are approved by the state, we will go out for construction bids. Expect to go out for bids this September, begin construction in December, and move into the building in the spring of 2023. In our last update, Mr. Travis asked about whether the new building was going to have an air cleaning ionization system similar to what you've put in the county buildings, and I'm pleased to report that our plans do include that. So in previous updates, we've shared how quarter cent sales tax information revenues have been used for technology improvements in our classrooms and labs, hardware and software for a new program in cybersecurity, and also greenhouse for our new agriculture, agribusiness program. To give you an update on some recent uses of funds, we've been, we have renovated a former biology lab in the science building for a hydraulics trainer lab in our industrial systems program. We've added more security cameras inside our buildings and hallways and building entrances, and this has really improved the security on campus. We also are planning to renovate our cosmetology lab in our science building. I haven't renovated this lab in about 25 years, so it really needs an update. And then one project we were hoping to do this spring is to start rebuilding our gym, but we decided to hold that off for a few months because Cone Health and the County Health Department wanted to use our gym for a site for vaccination clinics, and we thought that was a great idea, and it's turned out to be the perfect site. And I want to take this opportunity to really thank you and thank the county departments that have been involved in this. They've really worked well together. It's been a pleasure for the college to work with them, and we're so glad that this has turned out to be a success. Just to wrap up, these quarter cent sales tax funds continue to be a benefit to our students and I think to the business and industries in the county, and we appreciate your support. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Richardson?
Well, for public information, some of the projects you were talking about are not quarter cent sales tax. They are bond and state provided funds, and for the public's benefit, could you point out other monies that you are using to improve RCC's facilities?
Yes, yes. We do have the benefit of getting some state NC connect bond funds, and those monies are being used to renovate the second floor of our humanities building. We've used it for our student center project, and we're going to be using it to renovate the industrial tech two building. And we're, plans are being finalized, we hope in the next few months for that. We start that project later this year. So it's great when we can put these funds together and really get the best use of them.
Yeah, and one other thing, again, for public benefit, some of the contractors out there are doing a little math in their head, and I've done it a little more precisely. This Center for Workforce Development is going to cost $428 a square foot, which is a pretty high price if you have a contractor here. Tell me why that is.
Well, I think because of the use of it. I mean, there's going to be state-of-the-art labs for machining. We want this to be a project that not only college is proud of, but the county is proud of, and the way construction costs are running, which is what, you know, you're aware of and what you were talking about earlier. I'm hoping we can do it for that.
Does this estimate, does that include the equipment as well inside the building?
A portion of it, yes.
Okay.
And we're going to be also seeking other contributions or their donations to help fund that equipment.
Commissioner Travis, do you have a question?
Dr. Gunn, I just want to tell you, on the county's behalf, thanks for RCC being there for us during this COVID problem. I've gone there several times and to watch the operation, and I'm pretty impressed. Everybody, you're right, everybody's working like an old machine, but I really appreciate the college helping with that. It really suits the purpose. But, you know, I think a lot of people are just so excited, ready for this work center development program to get going. I know me for one, I'd like to see it going because that was a whole big push a couple years ago. Plus, you know, we've got a lot of people in this county, and they not always want to go to college. They get this training, they need it. And I'm glad RCC is pushing hard to get the upgraded technology so we can go into the next, you know, future with it, you know? So I appreciate it. Thank you for the college doing what you're doing.
Yeah, and if I can add, you know, if you know people out there who are ready to start, tell them not to wait until we get this building built. We're, you know, we're offering these programs right now.
Well, that's, we need to definitely get that word out then because I know some people are waiting, so we need to get that out. And maybe you can get with Mabel Scott and get on our channel too, and we can start putting that information out there to people.
We're already scheduled to work with Mabel next month.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pertle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Gunn, I just appreciate you being here tonight and sharing the information and everything that RCC does for the community. I've had the opportunity to go over there during the vaccination effort with the county and Cone and RCC, and it was a, it was a, just everybody with RCC staff appreciated everything that they did, along with the county staff and the folks from Cone Health. The only thing that I share with you is that, and I think the, you guys are doing a much better job at keeping the, those folks out in our community informed about what's going on with their money and how you're spending it, and these action items in a timeframe about what's going on and how we're spending the money and when we're anticipating the timeline for the new facility. And I appreciate you working with Mabel and keeping, on your PEG channel, keeping that information, pushing that information out to the community because, you know, at the end of the day, it's the people's money, and we need to make sure that we're all good stewards of it.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Let me say thank you for being here. We appreciate the update. We've agreed to do quarterly updates, I believe. So when will I see you again, Dr. Kenlaw? July or August?
Probably August, I'm thinking.
Very good. Well, we appreciate it. Again, I'd like to say thank you as well. I know others have, but I was able to get my COVID shot there at the gym. It went very well. It was very much appreciated to use that facility, and it did work out nice. So thank you to everyone at the college for letting us do that, and appreciate it.
Very glad to make it available. I'm glad it's working out so well.
Thank you, Dr. Gunn. With that, we'll move on to item 10, the Rockingham County Schools Transfer. Dr. Sanja Parks. Good evening, Dr. Parks.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, Mr. Metzler. Just want to first start off by thanking you for the restricted sales tax funds. This year, we put on five roofs, and we're getting ready to put on another five roofs. So I just want to thank you for all of your support and help with us really trying to get some projects done in our district. On March 8th, the Board of Education approved us to purchase seven work trucks, a mail van, and a dump truck for the maintenance department. We are requesting $380,500 to be transferred from our general current expense fund to capital outlay. We have about $15 million in our unrestricted fund balance, but overall about $23.5 million. So just the interest that we have paid over the past one and a half years could pay for these trucks. We have, our trucks is about 19 years on average of age. They're in bad shape. We have some trucks that have about 300 and some thousand miles, and so it's just time for us to do, you know, to update our trucks. We have been putting this in our budget over the past few years, but in our adopted budget, it just didn't make it because we had other projects that took priority. So tonight, I am requesting for you to approve the resolution of our vehicles.
Thank you, Dr. Parks. Any questions?
I got some.
Commissioner Richardson?
Move of approval.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Travis, do you have a discussion?
Yeah, I got discussion questions. I have no problem with you getting the vehicles and order money, but you already got the money. But I'm kind of questioning why you came. I guess it's about transparency. If you're taking from your fund balance, you don't need to come before us because it's coming from your fund balance, not ours.
We are required to bring you a resolution.
Are you? Okay, I didn't know. But the other question is, you know, last couple budgets that you sent to county, these requests were in there.
Yes, sir.
So are you requesting stuff from the county, and then after we approve it, changing your budget?
I'm sending in about an $8 million request every year, and we receive around $800,000.
Right.
So I'm having to make cuts, so that's one of the first things that we cut.
So are you wanting to do $8 million worth of work capital improvement needs every year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have to think that we have over 3 million square footage of space, over 112 buildings in Rockingham County schools, and that is a lot to take care of. And so I have to prioritize $800,000 to, you know, make an impact in that fiscal year.
Right, I understand. I understand you've got a lot of buildings, and we need to take care of them, but it seems like every year, we're getting the same requests over and over and over again, and, but you're not really fixing what's, what you're requesting. Even though the county gives you a minimum amount, $800,000, so we don't put no stipulations on what you do with the money, so you do the best you can. I understand that. I do understand that.
And you presented a report showing you what exactly we have spent our money on.
Right, so let me...
Projects and our progress.
Right, thank you, Dr. Parks. So let me ask you, with the American Recovery Fund that you're going to be getting, how much are you getting, and where is that money going to be spent?
Plus to 55 billion we are getting. The S R funding, is that what you're talking about?
The American Recovery Fund, yeah.
Yes, and we are planning to spend that on summer learning as well as technology needs that we have and HVAC.
So nothing on capital needs except for HVAC? That's it?
Yes. Well, there's certain stipulations that they have given us for the S R funding.
I haven't heard. How much, how much did they give you?
About 55 million.
55 million. Ooh. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Parks.
Any further questions?
I just, three different funding. I just want to... S R 1, S R 2, and then there's the S R 3 funding.
I got you.
Mr. Berger?
I want to help clarify some information that just came out. I believe what you said, Dr. Parks, is each year, you've submitted the same capital request, and what's been funded is about 10% each year. So that leaves 90% unfunded every year that you've made that request. And so those 90% of unfunded requests don't just disappear, they show back up the following year.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, nothing further.
Very good. Thank you. Gentlemen, any further discussion? There's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very good. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Parks. I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
When I hear her, I think my phone's going to ring in.
All righty, very good. That takes us to item number 11, new business. Mr. Manager, is there any new business tonight?
Yes, sir.
Very good. With that, we'll move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Travis?
No comment.
Commissioner Pertle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Only thing I would like to say is, again, it was, it was great to have Ron Ferris here and recognize him tonight for over 40 years of service to Rockingham County. Coming from working in the municipality, we always thought there was, when there would be at one employee, that special employee, when they left the organization, you wonder how you was going to continue to operate, and I could easily see that Ron Ferris is one of those guys. You wonder when he walk out the door, how the county's going to survive. And so I congratulate him on his retirement and wish him well and enjoy those, everything reaped what he sowed. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Pertle. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we heard two really good examples tonight of people that have contributed a lot to this county, paid and otherwise, and volunteerism. And again, Ron Ferris is one of those, 40 years plus worth of service. But also Cory was talking about the food drive and the contributions there. That's huge. Janice, we appreciate everything that you and your other volunteers do for the Committee on Planning for the Elderly. It's essential, and it's important, and I just want to recognize throughout the county, lots of volunteers doing that. And sometimes you folks that take up the agenda do look at the consent because you'll find some other volunteers listed there. And we appreciate having those people. If you haven't an interest at all in volunteering for any of our committees within the county, please contact Ms. Woods over here, and she'll be glad to put you into a slot where you can make a contribution. One of the reasons that, or the reason that Dr. Kenlaw wasn't here tonight was he's at the school board meeting, and he's going to be pushing to improve the participation rate by students in the various job preparation programs we have. That's Rocket Top and so forth. He's going to be talking about expanding the early college program to include more of the occupational courses of study. You know, here in Rockingham County, we have, there's no place in the country that has a better program for young people to get qualified for a good, rewarding, well-paying job, and yet we're not having as many folks as ought take advantage of that. So I encourage everybody, if you know a young person or an older person, look into these programs, particularly through RCC, and if you're still in high school, go to your guidance counselor. There's some good stuff out there. And I look forward to seeing the results with more people being employed here in Rockingham County. We already have the jobs, and we're going to get more. We just need to prepare our people and get them to volunteer, not volunteer, to step up to the bar and do that. So thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I wanted to share.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Berger?
Yes, just thank everyone for coming out tonight. Special thank you to Chris Burns from Draper Pentecostal for providing the invocation. Also, a special thank you to Houston Barrow. Houston volunteers quite a bit in the community, and certainly appreciate you being here tonight and providing the, or leading us in the pledge. And also want to recognize Tony Reese and Bonnie Purgson from our Board of Elections, and certainly just reiterate what's been said by some of the others. Ron Ferris is certainly one that we'll miss. Seemed that every time something was needing repaired at the courthouse, he was there. Commissioner Chambers, he was there. He was in a lot of places, a lot of time, fixing a lot of stuff. So certainly appreciate his dedication over the years. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Well, I don't really have anything much tonight. I'd like to thank Roy and Andrew tonight for their services. Thank you, everyone, for attending. And with that, our next meeting will be May 3rd at 6:30 here in our chambers. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, folks.
Dr. Parks?